Hello. I'm Colleen Mar and I have the distinct honor of being the mayor here in the borough of Fanwood. And today, I have the pleasure of sitting down with some familiar faces in our community. And we're going to be having a conversation about the upcoming referendum that the Board of Education is sponsoring. So I want to welcome my friend and colleague from Scotch Plains, Mayor Josh Lassardo.
Morning.
Good morning. I also would like to welcome two members of the Board of Education, Amy Winkler, who was elected by the voters.
Hello.
And Dr. Joan Mass, who leads the Board of Education. Hello, Dr. Mass.
Good morning. It's great to be here.
Well, it's really great, I think, that we all are here. And the mayor and I felt that it was really important that we had an opportunity to sit here and we're coming to you from our new Fanwood library, if you're wondering where this is, about a very important question that will be before both towns, the voters of both towns, on January 28th. And that is a referendum seeking the voters' approval to purchase the La Grande School as well as upgrades to mechanical and heating and electrical in the other facilities.
That's right.
And then an operating budget for the new school.
Exactly.
All right. So I think we have a lot to cover and we hope that you will pay attention and come along. And we hope at the end of this that we answer some of the questions that you may have. So today, we're going to break this down, I think, into four central themes that we can then cover a lot of information. So we're ready?
We're ready.
All right. So I would like to ask first, I think, for whether it's Amy or you, Dr. Mass, or jointly, to talk a little bit about why we are going back out for a referendum. You know, we had a referendum and it was primarily, is primarily driven by space. So I think that's where we should start because this would be a second referendum on that important topic. So why don't we just talk a little bit about why does the district need space?
So we need space for a number of reasons. Our classrooms are at capacity. Some of them are a little beyond capacity. Our elementary schools are at capacity and beyond. We have no additional classrooms available. We have some classrooms we're using for multi-purposes. We have now gone to, instead of a single lunchtime at the elementary schools, we've gone to having staggered lunches, which means some students are eating very early in the day and some are eating very late in the day. It's probably not ideal for them, especially at that age.
Correct.
I think several of our buildings have music on a cart moving around the building. There is not a dedicated classroom for that. Some of our schools have instrumental music classes in the cafeteria, which is why we have the staggered lunches going on, in part because we're using part of the cafeteria for music classes, which has to be difficult. You can imagine the noise in an elementary school at lunchtime. It can't be easy to have music classes in those rooms at the same time. The initial referendum that we had back in September was to address our needs long-term. And that was voted down, as you know. So now we're looking at just addressing what our current needs are. And if we can make additional spaces in the elementary schools by pulling out the pre-K classes, then that will address our most pressing needs at this time.
So, Dr. Mass, why don't we talk just a little bit more about that, you know, pick up where Amy sort of left off because the space is really the fundamental reason for the referendum. And so, you know, you heard what the community said when they went to the polls and voted down the first referendum, which was really tied to a much larger plan with a much larger financial amount tied to it.
That's right.
So talk a little bit about this, what this is.
So really, we heard the community. We went back to the table. We had an open future planning meeting with 60 community members and we listened to their feedback. And what we were able to really come across, what we were able to come to consensus with was that we needed to address the current problem. And the current problem is really a good one because people want to raise their kids in Scotch Plains Fanwood. The towns are just wonderful places for families and kids. And part of that is the asset of our schools. And right now, at our elementary schools, we're out of space. There isn't one extra classroom in any of our elementary schools. And that's quite remarkable because we just added several classrooms, seven, I believe, over at Evergreen because the board moved out of that space to create additional classroom space. So even with that relief, across the district, we still don't have one extra classroom. So what that means is as more kids come in, class sizes get larger, lunch periods get more crowded, or you have to add more lunch periods that extend the time when kids are eating, or even worse, they might have to eat in their classroom. We already know that drop-off is a pain point. It's very crowded out there. So to have more kids, you know, in the schools that we currently have just adds to the crowded space. We know that when we go to a crowded restaurant, it's not the same experience as when you have elbow room in the restaurant to be able to enjoy the people that you're with. It's kind of similar in schools. If you have space in the schools, it's just less frenetic and you can really focus on the teaching and learning.
So what's the vision, then, for the La Grande School? If the focus is on reducing the overcrowding, right, or the lack of space in our elementary schools, so where does the La Grande School now come into play?
Okay. Really good question. So the La Grande School would allow us to take our current preschool classes that are in all of our elementary schools except for McGinn, and it would open up nine classroom spaces. So that would give us that elbow room that we need within our schools to just have more space right now. And it would address the overcrowding. It could address adding music rooms. Or if we just need additional grade-level classrooms, we would have space to do that.
Okay. Mayor?
In the first referendum, there were two questions. The first question concerned the acquisition of the La Grande School, and the voters rejected that for many reasons, we've come to understand. There was a second question that the community supported, and that question related to improvements. I understand the HVAC system and fire alarms and that sort of thing. Does this referendum that the voters will be considering on January 28th include those types of improvements to the school system in Scotch Plains and Fanwood?
Yeah, absolutely. We need upgrades to our electrical systems and in part because they're aging infrastructure, but also in part because of the increased demand for technology. We didn't used to have everyone on laptops and computers and things like that. And now, there are not enough sockets in classrooms. So we need these upgrades. Also, the fire upgrades, those systems also are aging and need to be replaced and upgraded, addition of carbon monoxide detectors, things like that. And HVAC is, we only have three schools currently that are fully air-conditioned. And as we move into hotter climates, and it's not just the summer when schools are closed, and actually, even in the summer, we have some classes in the schools, we do need to have air conditioning available in all of our classrooms. Right now, when the weather gets really hot, we have had school closings because it's just dangerous to have people in the buildings when it's that hot. But when the buildings are open and we have the hot days, we're moving classrooms, kids out of classrooms and into multi-purpose rooms and spaces that are air-conditioned in the building, and it's not really ideal for learning.
We have many buildings in the communities serving as our schools. They're not new buildings. And they require infrastructure improvements. And this mechanism through the referendum not only would open up classrooms, that would alleviate the problems you shared a few moments ago, but also lead to improvements throughout the system in these types of improvements.
And as I noted earlier, by going out for referendum for these items, we'll get state aid back to help cover a percentage of that to offset the tax impact.
See.
So let's talk a little bit about, you know, what we've touched upon here, which is going out for referendum versus this idea of just sort of paying for it in your operating. And why districts go out for referendum? Why don't we start there, right? Because there's dedicated money, as we have heard you speak about.
Yeah. So everyone in our state taxes, we pay towards this fund that goes to districts that are going out for referendum to do work on their buildings.
So, Dr. Mass, Amy was just talking about the mechanism of a referendum and the state funds that are only available to a district if it goes to referendum. And some people don't understand why we need to go to a referendum, why it can't be done sort of in your operating budget. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that and where the district has been over the last 20 years in doing improvements to all of the facilities? Because it's been, I think, that long, 20-plus years since there was a referendum, and that referendum was on turf fields.
That's correct. So, you know, historically, the district has operated in a way to try to get, to try to get work done through the operating budget. And that has certainly served us well because we currently do not have any debt, and that's quite unusual for a public system in the state of New Jersey. However, when you really need to get something large accomplished, you can't do it within your operating budget. You really need to go to the taxpayers and have them vote on the need, and you really need to communicate how compelling the need is.
Right. And the nuance is, I think, for us as mayors in local government, is that local government doesn't operate that way, right? We're able to raise debt and there's a process, right, of going out for a bond and doing, you know, a public hearing and laying our stuff out. The difference with public schools is, is that voters need to approve your spending. And that, I think, is the difference that I'm hoping the community hears, right? So for all the last 20 years, the improvements that they have seen have really been done through the operating budget that is raised through taxes.
That's correct.
And now, they're really, we're at a point where the needs are really significant. Significant in space and significant in HVAC and fire and electrical.
Exactly.
And you can't just piecemeal it anymore.
Right.
Because I think that's what's been done over the last 20 years since the last referendum.
That's a good way to say it. And an example would be universal air conditioning. So some of our schools do have air conditioning. The high school does. School One was actually built with air conditioning. We were able to get air conditioning in Nettingham, and the intention is to get every school fully air-conditioned for reasons that we already mentioned. But we're not there. And as you go along putting in the HVAC systems at such a slow rate, you have to wind up repairing the air conditioning that you have already done. So it's really very inefficient to get to the goal of universal air conditioning. You really need the voter support.
So let's talk about the fact that you are going to go for a referendum because the cost of the purchase, the price of the building, and then to do the other upgrades. It unlocks money from the state.
That's right.
So let's talk about the cost of the referendum and then the money that is going to be offset if this passes will then kind of come off of that overall number, correct?
That's correct. So we will get $11.4 million back from the state fund for putting in the HVAC, the fire alarms, and the electrical. And the building itself is less than that. The building is $10.4 million. So the money that we get back from the state actually covers the purchase of the building.
So for the voters, the taxpayers, this state money sort of then helps reduce the burden, the tax burden, that will be given to us as a result of the referendum if it passes?
That's correct.
Right? So that it really takes it down, doesn't take us to zero, right?
That's right.
But we need to make improvements to our school districts.
Yes.
So voters, and they should educate themselves in addition to watching this video, there's an informational session at Terrell Middle School on January 16th at 7:00 PM. I understand the superintendent and school board members will be there until the last question is asked. On January 28th, the voters will have two questions before them, similar to the prior referendum. The first question relates to the acquisition of La Grande School, and the second question relates to the staffing of La Grande School. And I understand there are different price tags on both questions. And the board has responded to the community's rejection of the first referendum by reducing your costs overall as to what the community is looking at if this referendum passes. In dollars and cents and real-world numbers, can you share with us what the impact, the financial impact, would be to the average taxpayers if both questions were to be passed on January 28th?
Okay. So we're going to just go into that a little bit more deeply. Thank you for that very good question. The first question, as we've been discussing, is about the purchase of the La Grande School and the upgrades with HVAC, electric, and the fire alarms. So that question is the $44.8 million, which will cost the average taxpayer around $150 a year. The second question is about how we're going to staff the La Grande School. And it will be an initial and then just an additional insertion into our annual budget because the school is going to need, you know, an administrator, a nurse, some grounds people, a custodian. So there's just an annual budget increase to have that additional school as part of our budget.
And how much is that second question?
That second question is going to be $1.1 million in addition to our school budget, our annual budget, which is $108 a year for the average taxpayer.
So again, we've got two questions on the ballot. The second question deals specifically with the operation of a new school.
That's right.
So a million dollars, roughly a million dollars gets raised of new money, gets inserted into the overall budget, operating budget of the school district.
It becomes part of our operating budget.
And so that million dollars is what helps fund it and operates the school, and can be translated into anywhere between $8 to $9 a month, or roughly $108 a year, depending on what community you're living in.
Exactly.
It's very close to it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So we've talked about a lot, which I think is really good substantive information. But one of the things that I think we would do a disservice if we didn't really talk about is what happens if the referendum fails? You know, we're sitting here today because the voters went and they made their wishes known. You've taken that in. You've driven down the scope of the overall referendum questions, which has brought down the overall price tag. You're trying very hard to communicate out why this is so important. In your opinion, what happens when they go to the polls on January 28th and, you know, that evening we feel or we see that it has been rejected?
So, you know, if that would happen, the safety items that are being asked for in the referendum are still needed. So we would have to find the way to do it in the operating budget. Again, we wouldn't be able to do it as efficiently with time, but we would still need to address things like the electric and the fire alarms and the HVAC. But we wouldn't get that $11.4 million from the state. We would be having the taxpayers cover the whole bill.
But I think an important part is, is that just like we are under a 2% cap in what we can raise our operating year over year, you are also under a 2% cap.
That's right.
So the cost to do these district-wide improvements to these schools for HVAC, electrical, and fire would be done, but at a much smaller and slower pace.
Yes.
And maybe at the expense, maybe at the expense of other decisions because you have to incorporate it into your operating.
Exactly. Yes.
And...
And it would cost the taxpayers more if the referendum didn't pass because the $11.4 million in grant money wouldn't become available.
That's right.
So it would be, the improvements would be at a snail's pace, and voters would likely see higher increases year after year to make up the income necessary to meet those expenses.
So if the referendum doesn't pass, another impact would be that we wouldn't get the nine additional classrooms at La Grande, which would mean that we would have to find space for our students that are currently in an overcrowded situation. And how would we find that space? You know, I think that the board might have to consider going backwards on full-day kindergarten because that would give us many additional classrooms, though that would really be a huge step backwards. So we would not want to go there. That would be a last resort. We would have to perhaps have larger class sizes. And right now, we're, you know, we're really approaching the maximum. And the community historically has really valued the class sizes that we're maintaining. And it is not only good for kids, but it's good for our teachers as well and the whole teaching and learning process. So if we had to, you know, just move forward with the limited space that we have, it would really put us in a place of making very difficult decisions.
Absolutely. And, you know, for myself as the mayor in Fanwood, where the property in question sits, right? For me, I saw this as sort of life coming full circle with the property since it originally was a public school, you know, the La Grande Public School.
That's right.
And the district sold that, you know, years ago when they felt, right, that they didn't need it because of the enrollment. And I think, you know, we know that when the opportunity came, because that existing private school that was there decided to leave and is going to another community to build a new school there, this property came on the market. And I think that's what, I believe, drove your decision for now.
That's right. It certainly was something that we were grappling with. How would we find more space? It was a request from the community within our strategic plan to make sure that we have space that's adequate for the education of our children. So the Grand School, when it came on market, it was quite compelling to look to that.
And from where we sit as, you know, the elected officials, we know that that property will then go back on the market, you know, the next day, you know, January 29th, and that it will probably be taken under contract probably pretty soon, and it will probably be for residential housing. I mean, that's where all the indicators are. And I think, I say that because that is just the reality of, I think, our worlds, right? We see highest and best use of property is being residential. And we understand what the community sees, both the positive of providing additional types of housing, and then also the concerns that they hear, that we hear about too much housing. And that's a balance, you know, but at the end, you know, we are under a mandate to provide housing in our communities because overall, there is a shortage of affordable housing. And we can, you know, at another time, maybe get into that whole situation of the Mount Laurel decision and what's driving, you know, the set-asides of what has to be included, inclusive development. But today, you know, we sit here talking about the pressures that are going on within the district. And if this referendum isn't successful, I think for my community, they, I think they're smart enough to understand that what will happen. And I think for you, you know, that will provide the education for what would be probably residential, it will just be additional students that will be coming out of a possible redevelopment site there, you know?
So acquiring the, if the referendum is successful, the schools would acquire La Grande? It would protect that property from becoming an additional housing, additional residential housing? And it would also, I know you've considered, you've shared with the community before, you've considered doing construction in all the schools and making other changes that, to respond to the overcrowding. Could you share with us why adding a floor or additional rooms, classrooms to other buildings is not as, is not as preferable as acquiring the La Grande School?
So there are many reasons. One, if you're, for example, if you're adding up to build a floor on any of our single-story schools, that would be very disruptive. You would need to, you know, close down that segment of the school that was being affected, and you'd have trailers on the property until the construction was completed, which not only is inconvenient, but it's also expensive.
Costs much more.
I think it's really important to emphasize that the La Grande purchase and getting those nine classrooms, it's cheaper per classroom than adding on a classroom to any elementary school. So when we looked to add bricks and mortar to attach classrooms to our schools, it was more expensive than purchasing the La Grande School and doing the upgrades that are just needed to make it an operational school. So the other, the other challenge is if you're adding school, if you're adding classrooms to schools, you're making, you know, that campus larger and you're making the drop-off larger, you're making the lunch demands larger, you're making the special spaces of the media center, the libraries, you know, larger. And they're already at capacity, the cafeteria as well.
Right. That's a question I've heard from many people in the community. And I know I've used your website to get the information. I needed times to answer those questions. And if you're looking for answers to your questions, the Board of Education has organized a website, maybe you can give the title of the site.
spfk12.org/future has all the information there. There's a FAQ page there with all the questions that we've heard come in by email or by phone call or just walking up to people and talking with them about it. We tried to answer as much as we could possibly get in there to help people.
So as we wrap up our time together here, which I want to, you know, thank everybody for coming, we think this is important for our two communities to really get, you know, accurate and credible information about the referendum. Why don't you just talk a little bit about what your plan is for the next couple of weeks as we sit here in the beginning of January with the referendum on the 28th? The date and the time? And talk a little bit about Election Day itself?
So starting with Election Day itself, the election, the polls are open from 2:00 to 8:00. And people have a lot of questions about why 2:00 to 8:00. First of all, whenever we've had these special elections for schools in the past 50 years, that has been the time, and I think it's so we're not disrupting the school day. It's very difficult to operate the schools while elections are occurring. So that's the reason for the timing there. There's information where people could, you know, they could have a mail-in ballot. They could actually go over to the Union County office and submit their mail-in ballot just in person. So if the January 28th date isn't convenient, there are other options for that. Additionally, we have an open mic, which Mayor Lassardo mentioned earlier, that come and ask your questions, raise your concerns. We will answer every question that you raise. The board members will be there as well as the school administration. Additionally, there has been mailers to just remind you of those open mic nights as well as when you are, when you could come and vote. And we also have a lot of information going out on social media as well as...
Print media.
Print media. And we have the opportunity for you to email your questions, and we answer every single one of those. So if you'd like to get your questions answered that way, that's another option.
All right.
Yeah. And that's all very helpful because we want the voters to be educated and get the right answers, factual answers. And there's mechanisms to do that clearly by attending these sessions or familiarizing themselves with the information on the website.
Yep.
And then, most importantly, to vote on January 28th between 2:00 and 8:00, or sooner by mail, as the superintendent shared. We hope that all voters over 18 in Fanwood and Scotch Plains vote. It's very important to the communities that the referendum be fully considered. And then it's, and then we'll hear what the voters have to say about this new referendum and whether the community supports making the changes that the board is proposing.
Well, thank you again for sitting down with us. You know, we really appreciate the time. We appreciate everything that you do every day for our kids, right? And really ultimately providing them with a world-class, public-free education. You know, we know as mayors that the value of the homes in our community is tied to the strength of our public school system. We know that. And so for that, I think we would be remiss if we just didn't say thank you. You know, thank you for always putting our children first and providing the space for our teachers to do what they need to do.
Well said. I know that's why I moved to Scotch Plains almost 20 years ago, to raise my two children here and send them through the public schools. And they've been exemplary. And we appreciate the time this morning.
Well, I'm a product of it, so here I sit. All right. So I hope you've enjoyed this interview, which we really are very happy to bring to you. We will be running this a lot on our public access stations as well as pushing this out onto our social media. And if you have any questions for myself or the mayor, you know, you can always reach out to either one of us. Take good care, be safe, and Happy New Year.